Asking the questions, if the tree warden is going to be the only, I guess, presiding member of this, the notification process, I mean, I'm wondering, I still have the question, I'm wondering, what's appeals process? How is the tree warden going to conduct hearings? So, I mean, I think, I think there's still some questions to be answered before we pass this ordinance.
Councilman Stychos.
Well, as I said in committee, there isn't an appeal from the tree warden in this ordinance. The appeal is to the tree warden. So, that's how the process would work. I would just, I would urge people to, to support this ordinance. I think we've, in the discussions, we've learned a bit about trees. When I started this, I thought that the, the trees on the tree strip were actually city property. And since then, from Pat Quinlan and Evan Kirshenbaum, we've been informed in the, in the committee that the trees are the property owner's right, uh, property, but the city in most cases has an easement over those trees. So, should they be in the power line? That's how the Verizon has a right to, to go in and trim them. And if they're blocking a fire hydrant, the city would have a right to, to go in and remove them. So, what this ordinance says is, when those cases arise, when trees are going to be cut, there's notice to the homeowner. And at that point, the homeowner can appeal to the tree warden and say, "I don't think the tree needs to be trimmed," or, "Look, I'll do it myself because I planted this tree and I, I want to make sure that it's well taken care of." This came out of, again, for people who weren't at the committee hearing, it came out of a, a homeowner's who planted a tree and had it twice fairly roughly pruned, once by Verizon and the second time by the Public Works Department, because they needed to get their apparatus to clean the catch basins directly over the catch basin and the tree was in the way. I don't think there's any dispute from the homeowner that some pruning was necessary, but the point is that the homeowner should know that this is going to happen and it is their property and have the right to appeal the, the pruning or removal of the tree.
Councilman Arquette.
Thank you, Council President. I just have a question for the sponsor. It's on page thirty, uh, thirty, line thirty-nine. "If any person, firm or corporation, objects to removal or pruning of the tree or shrub, he or she may appeal to the tree warden in writing." My concern, I guess, with that would be, if the tree warden gets involved with hearings from the public, is the tree warden going to conduct these hearings after four o'clock and get more overtime? Or are these hearings going to be within his realm of eight to four, his hourly timeframe?
You can answer. Go ahead.
Well, I see Evan may want to add, but it would be my opinion that as this is written, that would be up to the administration.
That's my one question. I don't want to create more, I don't want to create more overtime at a time where we're very restricted and limited as far as public funding is. So, if these hearings are going to be conducted during his, uh, his eight hours on the job during the day, I don't have a problem. But it's going to create more overtime for city employees, I can't support it.
Yeah, maybe, Evan.
When Pat and I discussed the existing state law with respect to the establishment duties of a tree warden, we looked at this very question. And what we found out was that it's an existing duty of a tree warden pursuant to state law to conduct these hearings in the event of a tree dispute. So, the way we looked at it was, it's implicit in the budget that you give to the tree warden that these hearings are part of that budget. It's not an additional line item that we're not funding or something of that nature. And Pat and I think that the tree warden can set up his own administrative procedure on how he views this. And we hope that if somebody gets notice that a tree will be pruned or chopped down, I call it the horizontal pruning, that the tree warden will go out to the homeowner and discuss with him on the property exactly what that homeowner's concerns are. A kind of informal procedure where the city can be assured that its utility easement is protected and the homeowner will be assured that the tree is not going to be unnecessarily damaged. So, that's the way we envisioned it.
Please use the microphone, Councilman.
It's not specified in the ordinance. I mean, theoretically, that's, I agree with you, that's the way it should be done, but there's nothing carved in stone or concrete in the ordinance that specifies that. That's my concern. So, if the sponsor wants to add something to that effect, I don't have a problem with it.
Councilman Navarro.
I'm going to be supporting this ordinance. I just, you know, I want to just keep it simple. The way I look at it is, this is to protect the homeowner that has a tree in front of their house. I mean, this is what this is really about. And one day they come home or they wake up and the tree's been pruned or cut and whatever. So, I mean, this is really more of the process of someone letting the homeowner know that this tree is going to get cut or pruned or whatever. And this is mostly for that homeowner to have some kind of say before that tree gets cut. So, I don't have a, I mean, it's pretty basic. I, I mean, it put, you know, just in case it's in front of a business, it says a firm, corporation. So, i- it's pretty much just to give that, that person who, or entity, just some kind of a say or find out what's going on before a tree gets cut down without anybody ever knowing. So, I'm going to support this. I think it's a pretty simple ordinance and it's, it's actually protects the residents of the city and businesses as far as trees in front of their, in their property. So, I'm going to support this. Thank you.
Council Vice President.
Thank you, Mr. President. To the sponsor, I want to, I want to touch back on the tree warden, the appeals process, because it's, it kind of given people the false illusion that there's an appeals process. Because if-
Hold on. A couple of, a couple of basic premises before you go on, okay? I draw your attention to line twenty-eight. The initial premise says that whenever in the opinion of the tree warden, so we're taking the tree warden as an expert. So, it's, it's, this is all predicated on him determining that it is the opinion is necessary to remove or prune any tree. That's number one. On thirty-six, it says, "Unless the tree or shrub constitutes an imminent public hazard." So, the assumption is that it's a potential hazard, not an imminent dangerous hazard, but it could be a hazard. So, that in and of itself, this is the appeal process. He's saying it should come down, someone's saying, "I don't think it should come down." And then the determin- determination is made after he listens to it back and forth and outlines with them what's going to be done to the tree, that the tree is either going to come down or going to be pruned back to a certain level. So, it is in and of itself the appeal process.
That's, again, Council President, I mean, just saying, I mean, if I don't want my tree to get pruned or cut down, I appeal to the tree warden and he's going to say, "Too bad, I'm cutting it down anyway."
Well, he's, with reason. You're, you're relying on an expert. He's a tree warden. He has certain responsibilities and licenses to, to recognize what might, might potentially be a hazard. I know we, we were given an example in, by someone who came during committee.
Yeah.
And he had these beautiful trees and he didn't like the way the utility company came in to cut them down. The, the problem was, he let them get to a point where they did interfere with the wires and that is a public safety hazard.
All right.
So, he may not like the way they were pruned, but it was up to him prior to that to keep them pruned back. The tree warden said, "We, we need to have this done because it could cause power failures and/or downed power lines and resulting in injury." All right, we're going to close this soon. Councilman Arquette.
Thank you, Council President Lupino. Just to reiterate Councilman Navarro's plug for the bill, it is a good bill and I think we need it. I think it's a method to get the homeowner involved. But my concern is, and I guess I'll address this to the administration and to the sponsor, how many tree wardens do we have in the city of Cranston? And I know the answer, it's probably one. Am I correct? Next question would be, how many homeowners do we know who live in Cranston that have trees? And it's in the thousands. So, my concern is you're going to be overburning the tree warden. And if you're overburning the tree warden, he's not going to be able to handle here the magnitude of the appeals within the framework of his eight hours. And therefore, you're going to create overtime for this gentleman, which he'll probably enjoy. But before we pass this bill, I would like some type of amendment attached that he'll do the due diligence, he'll, he'll take care of these pruning of trees and these trees that are, that need to be cultivated better in his eight hours or forty hours per week that he's working for the city. I do not want to create more overtime for city employees. We have, they have enough hands and when there's a snowstorm, when there's hurricanes, I mean, they do their job. We don't need to create additional overtime when we need that for, as I said, hurricane storms and disasters in the city.
Thank you, Council President. I have one question through the chair to the administration, through the solicitor's office. I would assume that this only applies to trees that are on the easement or overhanging onto the easement area of a person's property.
That's correct.
Okay. So, that any tree that's on eight feet back, you know, depending on the area of the city, any tree that's grown eight feet back would really not be subject to the ordinance jurisdiction unless it's overhanging into the street and power lines, correct?
I think, without getting too far off, I think the intent of the sponsor is to create that initial conversation between the homeowner and the tree warden so that no one wakes up the next day and looks out and is surprised about what they see, what happened to their tree. And I think if that happens, then that's, it's, it's going to serve its purpose.
And my, and my point was to allay some of the fears of Council, Councilman Arquette, that it's going to create a lot of claim, or a lot of issues. I don't, I don't think it will and we're under state mandate anyway for the warden to handle that. So, hopefully, we won't create any overtime, but I think we're mandated by state law. So, I'm going to vote in favor of this.
Is there any council person who has not spoken that wishes to speak? We'll end the discussion. We'll take the roll on the question.
No.
Yes.
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 Under Finance, Vice President Palatia.
Thank you, Council President. Committee met and we approve the following items: Tax interest waiver approvals as recommended by the City Treasurer.
Okay, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? If there being none, please take the roll.
Yes.
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 Resolution authorizing real estate intangible tax abatements.
Motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? If there being none, please take the roll.
Yes.
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 Yes. Resolution authorizing motor vehicle tax abatements.
And how was that voted?
I don't recall the exact vote.
It was positive though to approve.
It was positive, yes. It was recommended for approval.
Is there a motion?
No.
Second. Motion and a second. Please take the roll.
Yes.
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 Ordinance ten dash eleven dash four. Ordinance ratifying the school committee collective bargaining extension agreement with Rhode Island Laborers District Council on behalf of local union thirteen twenty-two, the school bus drivers. Committee recommended approval.
Motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Councilwoman Luciano.
I would like to know what the purpose of the transportation subcommittee is, though. Can someone tell me that? I serve on that committee and our purpose-
The purpose of the transportation subcommittee was the result of a resolution of the City Council looking into the long-term, the long-term cost savings if the city were to, or whether, whether any exist, long-term.
Right. So, don't you think it's a little bit premature to be voting on this right now? It can't wait until the committee submits its report, which I believe is at the end of next month?
Who are you directing that to?
Everybody.
Well, this was, this was feted in the, in committee and came through with a positive endorsement. Councilman Stychos.
Well, I think one, one of the reasons is that the savings are already being achieved by the school department and there was a concern by school committee members that if this was not ratified by the council, that those concessions that have already been saved, the payments would have to be made to the employees to make them whole. Because under the state collective bargaining law, until you have a new contract, the old one is in effect. So, I mean, the union might say, "Okay, we'll wait and you can keep the money." But if they were to say, you know, "We don't have a deal, so the old contract's in effect," then we'd have a financial problem in the school department. That's one of the reasons, I think.
Councilman Arquette.
Thank you, Council President. I just want to speak in favor of this contract. I want to thank Mr. Jordan and the School Bus Drivers Union for coming to the plate and giving up quite a bit of their package. It saves the city seven hundred and forty-three thousand dollars. It's a two-year contract. They've taken pay freezes, increased cost here for the health care, and, and they had to bite the bullet during difficult times. I want to thank them for that. In response to Councilwoman Luciano's question, the commission is still going on and I don't think we should be rushed in our fact-finding endeavors. I mean, we have to look at thirty-nine municipalities, cities and towns, how they've contracted to privatization, whether they lease buses, whether they still own their buses. There's a lot of information that commission has to ascertain. And I don't think we should rush to a conclusion before we have all that information. This is a twenty-four-month contract. It expires, you know, in two years. Hopefully, before that time, the commission will find all the necessary facts it will need to make a just and honest conclusion as to whether we should privatize or not.
Councilman Donahue.
Thank you, Council President Lupino. I agree with Councilman Arquette. I do appreciate the efforts that Mr. Jordan and his unit have made to achieve these concessions. But I think I share Councilwoman Luciano's frustration that the topic of outsourcing has been on the table for at least a year. I think in good faith, the council passed a resolution to create this joint commission of school committee members and council members to study the question. Those of us who have been in the business of outsourcing key operating functions have done similar analyses and completed those analyses in a much shorter period of time. What I've heard from at least one member of that commission from the school committee side is that the savings could be upwards of, or a positive impact on the city of a million dollars a year. And while I appreciate that we're counting on, as I believe, school committee woman Colhane indicated, a hundred thousand dollars in savings now, I am concerned, and in fairness to the school bus drivers as well, who are negotiating this contract in the context of a continued study of outsourcing. So, I didn't support the ratification of the contract in the finance committee for that reason. And if I may, through the, the council president, because we did not, I don't believe, hear anything from the administration on, during the finance committee hearing, if there's, if there's an opinion by the administration on this contract.
Regarding the contract, um-
Mr. Strom, introduce yourself to the weaver, so we're still here.
Oh, okay. Robert Strom, Finance Director, City of Cranston. Although I support the fact that, of the contract negotiations, that we are saving money on the school side, and I believe the savings has already been implemented since the middle of October. What concerns me is that if the council decided not to vote in favor of this contract and ratify it, this has already been implemented. And my concern would be that there would probably be a lawsuit between the two, the laborers' union and also the school committee. I think that the council should have been a part of the process of the negotiations as far as before it was implemented. The fact that it's been implemented for a month and a half, in my opinion, I don't know how much of a choice the council would have to deny this. So, that was one of my main concerns. I've had this discussion with the business manager of the school department and expressed my concerns on that, because he and I reviewed this briefly approximately a couple of weeks ago. Also, in regards to the buses, there's approximately, I believe, eighty-three buses that need to be replaced at some point in time. And I'm concerned of how that's going to be, is that through the school department? Is that going to be through the city? Is that going to be going off of bonding? Is that going to be through a capital lease? And another issue I had is, if they needed to extend the contract, why does it have to be for two years and why couldn't it be for one year before the committee could make a decision? So, those were some of my concerns. I'm not, not in favor of the contract, but I did have concerns of the process.
Thank you, Council President.
Any further discussion? If there being none, please take the roll.
Thank you, Council President. And I have all the respect for, for Councilman Donahue and I realize that he only means the best, but the facts and figures that he promoted, the one million dollars a year for ten years, those numbers come from one bus company and one bus company only. And I'm not going to state the name of the school committee member that's been advocating that. I won't mention the bus company. But I'll tell you this, the numbers that that bus company has promoted are bogus, they're not accurate. So, that one million dollars per year for ten years, that's fictitious, that's not reality. It's, it's much less than that. And that's all I'll say then.
Clerk, please take the roll.
No.
No.
Yes.
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 I will recuse on this.
Yes.
Yes.
May I continue, Council President? Resolution encouraging the Rhode Island General Assembly to pass legislation allowing advertising on and in school buses. Although, committee recommended approval.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I have a, I have a question for the solicitor. Oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Council President.
The resolution, the resolution asks to allow, to, to get general assembly approval. Is there another, is there another method? Because I, I know we've had some issues recently that have been done through a, a policy change by the Department of Education. So, and this, this resolution asks to go through the legislative process to change, to change law. But we all know that lately, there's been some things coming through the Department of Education that were just simply a matter of making a policy change.
If I could, Council President, defer to your counsel, Quinlan. I know he and I discussed, he had done some research on this in the past.
I believe based on research that the General Assembly has asserted jurisdiction over this in a, in a way that displaced the authority of the Education Department. This bill has been introduced several times in the General Assembly in the last few years and very vigorously debated. So, I think they have exercised jurisdiction in this area, they haven't been able to pass it yet. And I think it did make it out of one house one year. So, I think they, you know, have basically said the turf is theirs, not the Department of Education's. I, I don't know until a court, you know, challenged it, but I think that once they try to assert jurisdiction in that area and actually introduce and move a bill, I'm not sure the Education Department would try to move contrary to that.
Council Vice President, you had something to say?
Actually, Council President, you had touched on what I wanted to say.
Councilman Arquette.
Thank you, Council President. The City Council just passed a bill that allows us to own our buses for the next two years. This resolution will piggyback that. This resolution, hopefully, if the General Assembly removes the statute prohibiting advertising on school buses, once cities and towns own their own school buses, hopefully, we will get corporations to pay for advertisements that will at least limit or reduce the property taxes owner expense towards education. We all know today that the property owner pays the greatest amount per capita for education. And this is just one way to think out of the box and hopefully have corporations kick in some money. It's being done in New Jersey, it's being done in California. Hopefully, we could maybe raise a quarter of a million dollars to three hundred thousand dollars to target towards our school system. And that's my intent. Thank you.
Councilman Santa Maria.
Thank you, Council President. Through the chair, Pat, is there any reasoning behind why they're not allowing advertising on buses? Do they give a reason? I, I don't have the audience in front of me.
I wasn't able to attend the hearings, but I mean, there are arguments on both sides.
Some of the- I mean, the state law. What is the state law?
The state law is silent on it. There is no specific prohibition on it, but the General Assembly has, I think Representative Pacharka put it in one year and I think Representative Palumbo put it in another year to be very specific on that right. Because the, it's down in the chapter on transportation and the role of the Department of Education, but there's no specific language one way or another. And I believe from the introduction of those two bills and reading the descriptions of them, that they felt it had to be specifically enabled. And that's what's happened in other states such as New Jersey, California. They've actually gone to the legislature and had a specific authority granted.
It was granted in those other states?
Yes, New Jersey, I think it was this last session was just granted.
Because you could use the argument that some of our students use Ripda buses and Ripda advertisers, so, and Little League baseball advertisers when you go down the baseball field. So, I just figure out what the intent is. Is it harmful to a student to get on a bus that has advertisements on it?
I know that there are interest groups who have lobbied both ways on these in the other states. I can provide you, there's, you know, some, safety people argue one way that it distracts drivers. Other people argue that it distracts the children if they advertise inside the bus. But those states that have passed that have overcome those arguments, I think Maryland voted it down, I think. I'm not positive, I think Maryland voted it down.
Thank you.
And I believe from the introduction of those two bills and reading the descriptions of them, that they felt it had to be specifically enabled, and that's what's happened in other states such as New Jersey, California. They've actually gone to the legislature and had a specific authority granted.
It was granted in those other states?
Yes, New Jersey, I think it was this last session was just granted.
Because you could use the argument that some of our students use Ripda buses and Ripda advertisers, and Little League baseball advertisers when you go down the baseball field. So I just figure out what the intent is. Is it harmful to a student to get on a bus that has advertisements on it?
I know that there are interest groups who have lobbied both ways on these in the other states. I can provide you, there's, you know, some safety people argue one way, that it distracts drivers. Other people argue that it distracts the children if they advertise inside the bus, but those states that have passed that have overcome those arguments, I think Maryland voted it down, I think. I'm not positive. I think Maryland voted it down.
Thank you.
Councilman Navarro is first.
Councilwoman Lapino, if, I defer to Councilwoman Luciano.
Yield the floor to you so you can speak.
Thank you. Thank you. Through the chair, to the sponsor, would there be, I'm assuming that the advertising would be appropriate for children, would there be some kind of system in place to prevent inappropriate advertising?
Councilwoman, could you use the microphone?
That's an excellent question. Use the mic.
Is there going to be some sort of, like, a list to outline what kind of advertisements are allowed on these buses? I mean, you don't want to, you know, advertise for cigarettes and alcohol.
Thank you very much for that question. Serving on the school committee for four years, once the General Assembly passes a law to allow the cities and towns to advertise, the school committee will have jurisdiction over the transportation end of the buses. So I would assume that the school committee superintendent would create guidelines as far as what type of advertisement they would like to see. For example, would not advertise french fries on the side of the buses, things of that nature. So it would be up to the school committee. We have a council, why not? We have a councilman here who's against students eating french fries, and he will remain nameless. But let me say that, Councilwoman, it will be up to the school committee to create guidelines and to allow what would be appropriate advertisement and what would not be, and also what they would charge the different companies for advertisements. I would...
And that is, that answer is assuming that the General Assembly does not put restrictions in the bill as passed. They may dictate how much public service should be done and what manner of advertising should be done. Councilman Navarro?
Thank you. I'm going to be supporting this resolution put forth by Councilman Arquette. It's, I got to commend him for really, he's thinking outside the box, trying to relieve some of the tax burden. He's looking for alternative revenue streams for this city. And this is just the first step, obviously, that we need enabling legislation that it can be, if it gets passed, depending on how it gets passed, the school committee can carve this out. But, you know, great initiative to try to find ways, to find other ways to raise money for this city. And, you know, it's a democratic initiative, you know, that I see a lot of this stuff. We're trying to find ways, where we're trying to improve and lessen that tax burden on the taxpayers, and this is something that would help, and it could carved out. So I'm going to support it just because of the fact that you're trying to help the taxpayers find alternative revenue streams. They're looking for that kind of initiative, so I'm going to support this.
Councilman Steikos?
Just to address the comments of Councilpeople Luciano and Santa Maria, I voted against this in committee, and I'm going to vote against it tonight because of my concerns about who's going to want to advertise. And the people who are going to want to advertise are the same ones who advertise on the cartoons, and those are candy bars, chips, soda, things that are contributing to childhood obesity. So what I see as a danger in this proposal is that the very, the kids are going to get mixed messages. They're going to get on the bus and, you know, eat french fries, and then they're going to go to school, and they're going to be taught about, don't eat french fries. Now, I know that Councilman Arquette rightfully says it would be up to the control of the school committee, but there's going to be money dangling out there, and it's going to be hard to say no to some of these things. So that's why I'm opposing it.
Okay, let's just be the last word.
Thank you, Councilman. Just a rebuttal. Councilman Steikos, you served on the school committee, correct? While you were on the school committee, did you pass any guideline, any rule to restrict freedom of choice in the cafeteria? Can you respond to that?
What was the question?
This is a leading question. We'll get somewhere with this. I just, did you pass some type of enabling rule that restricted a student's choice of food in the cafeteria?
While I was on the school committee, I recommended, and the school committee passed, dietary limitations on the food served in the cafeteria.
All right, so if you did that while you were on the school committee, why can't this same scenario take place during a time when the school committee is going to allow advertising? I'm sure the school committee will restrict foods that will create students to be obese, so they can just create a law and say, we don't have any advertisements of chocolate bars, of fudge, of french fries. I mean, that's logical. So I can't, a man who served on the school committee created a rule that prohibited foods that were harmful to children, you have the same opportunity now. Because if this passes, people who serve on the school committee can do the same thing. And if they don't do the same thing, you go to the voting, you go to the, on election day, to the booth, and you vote against that person. So your logic, to me, doesn't seem accurate. Thank you.
I'll make the same, I'll make the same comment I made during the committee, is that without approval, we're already allowing advertising on school buses, and it's being held in their handhelds. That's where the advertising is going on. So whatever happens on the, at the General Assembly, this may be a way to promote that because they're being inundated with this on the way to school. They're not pulling pigtails anymore, Paul. So, that being said, please take the roll.
Councilwoman Luceano?
Yes.
Councilwoman Donahue?
Yes.
Councilwoman Seiko?
No.
Councilman Garo?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fackel?
Yes.
Councilwoman Serry?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bigga?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Ordinance Committee, Councilman Arquette?
Thank you, Council President. There was one ordinance that passed, the ordinance committee, I believe it was unanimously, ordinance 10-11-3, ordinance and amendment of Chapter 17, Dakota of the City of Cranston, 2005, titled zoning, as amended, the James H. Armington House Local Historic District.
Scott Master? Scott Master? Weebos? You're leaving in the exciting part. But I understand, they've got to go home and study and do all that other good stuff.
You can have all the time, kids running around crazy about five minutes.
Thank you for coming. Good luck, guys.
Thank you very much. Take them out for french fries.
How was that voted in, committee? Unanimously. Unanimous. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion is second. Any discussion? There being none, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilwoman Luceano?
Yes.
Councilwoman Donahue? Yes.
Councilwoman Seiko?
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes. Claims Committee, Councilman Steikos?
I, as people know, the process on the Claims Committee is that we authorize settlements of claims that are then made, and the full council, as a more of an informational thing, ratifies claims. The secretary who handles, the staff person who handles the claims, Anna Marino, was not at the Claims Committee meeting tonight, and I don't remember this one. I don't know if anyone else on the committee remembers this so that they could explain what it is, but can I, maybe they could speak and address it? I'm a little hesitant to move something that I can't remember, so...
Okay, hold on, because this is saying it came from Claims Committee. Does the solicitor have any information on this particular claim?
I believe that this was a claim involving a collision with a city vehicle that the committee voted to settle.
Is that the one on 295?
Yes.
Do you overpass?
Do you overpass?
Probably. Okay. I'll move the approval of the ratification of this claim.
So there's a motion, and is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? There being none, take the roll.
Councilwoman Luceano?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Public hearings, this is the section where it's open to any matters, and Diana Gordon had signed up. You're up first. Please limit your speaking for a few minutes.
What was that? Diana Gordon, 363 Pontiac Avenue. As you people all know, I am the coordinator to the Central Cranston Crime Watch, and I just found out some interesting facts about this area. When I moved here 12 years ago, I found it a really peaceful place. I still do, for the most part. You were able to walk along the street at night. You could walk your dog or, you know, have a pleasant time, but just within the last week, I had a meeting of my captains, and I found out that our pleasant little area is changing quite a bit. I found that within, just within the Auburn area, there are three halfway houses for drugs here. We also have a methadone clinic. I knew about the school for troubled teens, and we also have C-CAP, which works as well. Now, all these are very good things, but not all within a small area. This is just within Auburn. I don't know how many other things there are. I've been finding out quite a bit within the last week, and I'm really concerned. This is really important, that this area stays the way that it is, and in the last six months, I've seen so much graffiti around. We did a graffiti cleanup in the summer, and there's so much more graffiti now than there ever was. There are different types of taggings around. I was told that is not necessarily, well, I was told it was not gangs, but I believed quite differently. These tags are gang tags, and some of them might be by wannabe kids, but a lot of this is, I believe, more than that. I've gone to the internet, I've started learning the computer, and I've gone to the internet and looked up some of these tags, and they're pretty big gangs. I know that the federal government gives money to the city to put in, put these houses up, and unfortunately, a lot of this money is used not just for this area, but for all over Cranston. I believe that something should be done to take, to give us back the integrity of our area that we have. Our taxes are so high, we deserve to have a area that is safe. I heard that they're in Edgewood, they have one place. There are none, from what I'm told, in Western Cranston, nor are there any in Garden City or Deena Estates. It's kind of unfair that they're all moving in here. So I've spoken to a few people, neighbors, that didn't know that these were here, and they are concerned too. So I'm asking you to look into this a little bit and see what you can do about not letting any more come in here, or maybe spreading them out to other areas where it would be a little more fair. And that's pretty much what I have to say. If I could, can I talk to you after, Emilio, about this situation? All right, thank you.
Anyone else wishing to address the council? Please state your name and address.
Hi, my name is Katie King, and I reside at 1389 Hope Road in Hope. Just wanted to thank you for passing the three ordinance. We're definitely in favor of that. And Councilman Arquette, regarding the advertisement, you know, for the children, as a pediatric nurse, case manager, I know everybody was laughing about french fries. Forty percent of the kids are now obese. We have a big morbid obesity problem. And if, since it has passed, I would like to see if Dorothy Braley from Kids First could be involved with the type of advertisement that we want to have avoided, such as soda, you know, things like that, french fries. Dorothy Braley worked extensively with the schools and with other entities, with the State Department of Health, and we had a meeting last week on obesity for, you know, childhood, which is an epidemic in Rhode Island, and there were many people involved. Mrs. Chafee was there, there were many other, you know, different resources. But if that could occur, I can give you her information, or we would really like to have that happen. Thank you very much.
Ms. King, just so you understand, the resolution was just to...
No, I just want to put this in the record that we would, you know, we'd like to see her name, the ID, and I just want the number to operate and offer advice. Thanks.
There being none, Election of City officials Tax Policy Review Commission, anyone come forward with that, with those nominations at all? Councilman Arquette?
Thank you, Council President. I did request to you that I'd like nominated Councilman Steikos. I haven't seen a letter of appointment yet, and also, I believe you, you do have to appoint a member of the public, I think?
Yeah, I've been waiting. We've put the word out, and still no one has come forward.
I can recommend, if you want me to find somebody to...
Pass forward a recommendation.
The clock is ticking, and we need to get that going. I'd like to have an informal meeting before the new year, so we need to really get that moving.
Why don't you come forward with those names at the Ordinance Committee, and then we can pass those on for the council.
So you wish to nominate someone?
But we still can't go forward with the committee unless you have all of the members.
But you're the candidate, I mean, you're the man of the appointment, so, right?
Yeah, and as I said, no one's come forward.
So no, you need a member of the public, that's what you say?
Flood Committee, an appointment of Matthew Popino replacing Christopher Brulette. That's my appointment. The motion is second. Clerk, take the roll.
Councilwoman Luceano?
Yes.
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 Yes. Public Library Board of Trustees, Frederick A. Miller. Second. Term, January 1st, 2002, to July 27th, 2013. This is a replacement for someone who has resigned.
Just a point of order. You said 2002, Council President, instead of 2012.
2012 to 2013, yes. Sorry. There's a motion and a second, Council President. Clerk, take the roll.
Councilwoman Luceano?
Yes.
Councilwoman Donahue?
Yes.
Councilwoman Seiko?
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes. Any reporters to the offices?
There was a report distributed by the council's auditor that was left on all the council members' desks this evening.
Did you want to give us a highlight on this?
No, Mr. President, because it's just a little, you know, I would like to announce some of the local candidates discussing the question.
Council President? Council President? Yes. Make a notation to the clerk to have this document on the docket for discussion for the Finance Committee.
Make a notation to the clerk to have this document on the docket for discussion for the finance committee.
Yeah, you can do that as a request. Your Councilman Stychos.
May I also request that we, at the finance committee, discuss the whole pension situation now that the General Assembly has acted and where that leaves us? I don't know if that would be, because it may involve collective bargaining, whether that's an executive session matter, but I think we need to get some kind of idea of where this all shakes out financially.
We can do that, Councilman.
Thank you.
Any other report of offices? Okay, executive communications. Special counsel consultants.
Council President, we have hired one special counsel to assist the city with respect to the class action pending. That's it. And that's all for this report.
Okay. Councilman Santa Maria?
Thank you, Council President. Evan, you probably know the question I'm going to ask. Page three of the attorney's fees.
Page three.
Is this a running total, or is this over and above the $69,000 from last month? This is $73,820 in legal fees to one firm? Again, with the office's bill of rights, I know that this, most of this information is confidential.
It appears to be a running total, given the dates on the-
So the amount last month, this is in addition to that, or is this?
I believe that's a cumulative total to date.
Cumulative?
I'm not 100% sure, but just given the dates in the left-hand column, we see some dates in June, and we date-
September, all right, so this is a running total then?
Yes.
Okay, now. Do we have an end date on any of these?
On this particular?
Well, there's three, there's one that's general, and then there's two cases. Do we have an end date coming up soon, or?
No.
You say that with conviction, no? I know you can only tread softly on this, but-
Yeah, I could say unfortunately, no.
Okay, will we get an update next month?
I'm sure.
Thank you, Council President.
And then there's some, I'm sorry, Councilman Navarro, you have it.
Attorney Kirschenbaum, on the legal expense analysis, just looking through it, I just happened to cash, catch law firm Bliss and Kavanaugh LLP, legal matter, school department ACLU, city's portion of bill. If you can just clarify what this bill is, because from what I read and every, from in the media and everything, it's supposedly pro bono, no, this is being done for the bubble, and there's an expense to the city on that. What's the reasoning, or what's the, maybe I'm missing something, maybe we have to pay for something.
You know, I don't particularly know the answer to that. I'll ask and get that answer to you. The only thing I can think of is that it could be for costs that they've expended, like deposition transcripts, or, you know, things that they've expended.
Just, if you can just clarify also, because I mean, I know we have the attorney's hourly rates in the back, the last page. Under Bliss and Kavanaugh LLP, it says pro bono. So maybe you can explain to me, pro bono just means their time, but the expenses? I mean, is that stuff that we're going to have to pay for, for this case?
Director Strom tells me that I am correct. It's just the cost of expenses.
Okay, so when they say there's no cost to this, there's no cost in the case with this ACLU, there is a cost as far as even though it's pro bono, there is a cost that accumulate that we're responsible for?
Like, say, there's a deposition, and the stenographer charges the attorney for the transcript. That meant that, it means generally that the attorney's time at the deposition would be free or pro bono, but to get a copy of the transcript from the company, we would have to pay a transcript fee. Generally, that's the way the pro bono system works, because it wouldn't be fair to have the attorney donate his time and his money.
And I just want to clarify, so up to this point, we've expended the city's portion, meaning, I guess, this bill is a lot higher than that, and we have a certain. What percentage are we paying for these expenses on this lawsuit with the ACLU?
Can I answer that, Councilman?
Yes.
The city's portion, and I'm rounding off, is, I believe, approximately $1,300. And the school's portion is $1,300. We're splitting it 50/50. And then the balance, I believe, is for monies that was donated to the school for this case. And I think the total cost is around $5,000 as of that time.
Okay, so there's been outside people have donated, probably about half of that?
There's been some outside source to support this, and the city and the school are split at 50/50.
Now, the 50/50 split, was that something that the city and the school department agreed on, or how did that come about?
That was an agreement, yes.
That was an agreement, okay. Thank you.
Councilman Stychos?
Yeah, going back to the follow-up on Councilman Navarro's questions, who agreed to the city paying a 50% share of that legal bill?
I can't answer that.
Understand that the lawsuit is naming the school committee and the school department.
And the city.
It says the city and the school department.
And the city.
Okay, I'd like to know who, because I know the school committee voted over my objections to go ahead with this lawsuit, but I didn't know the city side was going to spend money on this case, which is pretty weak.
That's just your opinion. You can't say that.
I just did. It is my opinion, completely. So I would like to know-
He's doing for pro bono, Steve.
I would like to know who made the decision to pay half the bill. Thank you.
I would say, well, I would say in the first instance, whenever you get sued, the plaintiff makes a decision that you're going to get sued. And because we entered into agreement to split costs, I think that's more prudent than going it alone, so to speak. But I will get that answer to you.
And just as a clarification, it's not the city that, or the school department, that elected to sue. They are being sued. So your contention that you voted to not go forward with the suit doesn't mean anything. We are being sued.
Thousands and thousands of dollars. It could be, you know, $100,000 or more. I mean, you know, $1,300 in costs is nothing. We ought to be thankful that they're willing to do this without getting paid for their services, because these cases are very delicate, and they can be very, very costly. So I think we're fortunate that the taxpayers will be protected by someone who's willing to donate their services.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, claims, settled claims? What are we doing with these?
There were two claims that were settled by the solicitor's office. One was a vehicle damage claim, and the other was a personal injury claim.
Just informational, okay. All right, under Council President, communications. I happened to have an engagement a week ago Sunday in North Providence. I had the rare opportunity, my wife was out of town, to take my time going there. And I took the long route, and I went Central Avenue to Hartford Avenue to Killingley Street. And as I got there, the smell got worse and worse. And George Waterman Road, it was, I mean, it was really putrid. I got to the top of the hill at Middle Spring Avenue, and it was unbearable. I've received reports from people that I work with this past weekend in Lincoln. So the initial reports that it was affecting Garden City and Knightsville, it's affecting the entire state. At the hearing that we had, or the informational hearing from Rhode Island Resource Recovery, I made the comment that in 1998, when they were blaming Mr. Vinagro about the smells, that we could smell the odor from the landfill at Province College Schneider Arena, where our home ice was for Edward Hockey at the time. So I'm not surprised that it's traveling around. What I am of particular concern is this. We've received a communication, and let's take it for face value right now. Let's take it for this sincere, that they're going ahead and trying to make some corrections and all of that. But I did not hear anything from the DEM. And I would like to make that as a formal request through the administration, either Mr. Cordy or for Mr. Lopez, that at our next Public Works Committee meeting, that we have an answer to, whether it be in person, if they can make it, if they can't make it in person, at least a written communication outlining their support and their documentation that the steps that the landfill said that Rhode Island Resource Recovery said they're taking are indeed happening. Because we haven't had another set of eyes up there. We've only got their word that this is being addressed, so. Have we heard anything else in the interim?
Carlos Lopez, Director of Constituent Affairs. Council President, if you'll indulge me, I'd like to share that on November 22nd, I did receive a communication from Mike O'Connell informing us that there's going to be another meeting of the mayor's, state senate and state representatives, and city council presidents with the Rhode Island Resource Recovery, and that's going to be on December 14th. I'm not sure if you received that email as well, but if you have not, Council President, I will forward it to you so that you have the same information that we have as well. I actually spoke with Mike O'Connell right before-
Just to interrupt you for a second, that would be falling after our, is that the same day of? Is that after our Public Works?
After.
Yeah, so I would want something from DEM before that, before that meeting.
Okay.
You know, at least an update up to that point in time.
All right, what I'll do is I'll try to coordinate through the governor's office and their Director of Constituent Affairs, and have them help us out in getting that, or at least something from DEM. However, to go back to the situation, I did receive an updated briefing on November 22nd from Mike O'Connell, and he does outline some of the items or things that are going on. And if you'll indulge me, or if you wish, I can-
We already have that information. We are assuming, we all received that letter, we're assuming. But that came from the causal effect, that, I mean, that's the agency that's being blamed for, and it's their contention that that's what they're doing. But I think we need something from DEM to represent our interest to say that what they say they're doing, they are doing, and who's monitoring it.
Sure, I understand where you're coming from, Council President. If you will just let me read off the four items that they did update us on, maybe that'll shed some light on some of the issues.
Now, again, one more time, where's this report coming from?
This is coming from Rhode Island Resource Recovery, but it's verified, it's dealing with the actions that they're taking with DEM in the sense that they are reporting to DEM as well. So what they're telling us is what they've been doing with DEM. So the first thing is, Rhode Island Resource Recovery is updating DEM weekly on the action plan items that they approved so we can remedy the situation. The latest report is attached, and all subsequent reports can be found on the website, www.rirrc.org backslash odors. According to RIRRC, they are ahead of schedule and believe that the odor levels have improved. This is their letter.
Was that date?
November 22nd, right before Thanksgiving.
Okay, so that they're- Again, you're saying that they're doing these things, they're saying that they're ahead of schedule, and I can tell you, they're full of crap. Literally and figuratively.
We can smell it. But if you'll just, I'm just reporting on what they're sending to us in preparation for the meeting on December 14th, Council President. So what they're claiming is that the number of odor complaints received by us and by DEM has dropped significantly. At the peak in early November, they were receiving 25-plus complaints per day. Currently, they're averaging four to five per day. And I addressed this directly with Mike O'Connell, and I told him, I said, "I don't believe this portion of the report either." And what I've been doing when constituents have called our office is I've asked them to directly contact the Rhode Island Resource Recovery, because if the constituents don't complain, there's no log of their complaint with these people, and they're going to hang their hat on saying, "We're not getting any calls." So we're trying to encourage people to call Rhode Island Resource Recovery to lodge their complaints.
So anybody watching this on TV, you've heard it from Mr. Lopez, that he wants you to call him, and at the same, or right after, call Resource Recovery so we can monitor when they say they've only gotten five complaints, and you've gotten 15, that we know someone's, something's rotten dead mark.
Then the third item that they mentioned is that they have engaged the third-party expert to evaluate their corrective actions, as well as the air quality concerns that we mentioned at the last meeting. And both of those studies are underway and could potentially be ready for the December 14th meeting that we are anticipating having with them. And finally, according to them, in the last two months, they've spent over $1 million to address the problem. They acknowledge that this is a quality-of-life issue, and they will continue to invest in the systems at the landfill to ensure that the situation isn't repeated. They go on to say that while we believe our corrective actions are working, please advise if you are hearing differently from our constituents. We want to hear from you if the complaints to your office are increasing, decreasing, or holding steady. I also encourage you to give any constituent our phone number or email address, and invite them to contact us directly. So even from their end of the situation, they are encouraging people to contact them. So that's what we have right now, Council President. We are on top of it. I'm in almost daily contact with Mike O'Connell, and I'm just letting him know that. It still smells, and people are still complaining, and, you know, they really need to get on the ball on this.
Anyone want to add anything on the odor issue?
I just want to-
You had to straighten it first, and then-
Yeah, just add that they also put something in the paper, in the Providence Journal, outlining what they're doing in corrective action. It seemed like it was like a full page. I don't know if anybody saw that, but there was something from, you know, going over all the steps that they're taking, and- So I just wanted to, I mean, that sounds familiar to what I read on the-
That's part of their public relations campaign effort to keep the public informed. So they are going to be doing advertisements like that, and possibly even like radio spots to get the information out to the public.
Make no mistake about it, part of the $1 million that they spent was for an advertising agency to say that they are doing something to correct a problem that they should be correcting anyway. So it wasn't $1 million in coverage or events or corrective measurements. A lot of it was, they have a public relations firm that they hired just to deal with this issue alone. Councilwoman?
Why is this taking so long to get resolved? Why are there all these meetings? Why don't they just fix it? Like, what's the deal? Why is it taking this long? Why is it taking this long?
I was at the meeting, the initial meeting, and it's just the magnitude of it. It's much, much larger and a much more difficult situation to take care of. It would be the same issue with someone saying, "Why aren't you taking care of the floods in Cranston?" There's a big magnitude of this. It's very, very complicated. The whole design of the way the landfill has been supposed to be operating and the way it is right now is in flux. So, they did bring on some, a new company that's going to capture more of the gas than they have been, they've only been capturing about 30%, and they're aiming for 90, 95% plus, and that's an ongoing process. The, part of the problem, although it may sound like it's contrary to what you think, is, part of the problem is they're handling less trash, and they started a program where they were only filling half of the area that they thought they would be filling. And less trash equated to a more of an odor situation. And then add to that the percolation effect of a lot of rain. You know how much rain we've been having, and that has a tendency to go into the ground and percolate the gases. What you smell is not methane, it's what they call a naturally occurring sulfur compound from the landfill process. So, they did say initially that it was not going to be an overnight fix, that they're aiming to a December, early January fix.
Aren't there some sanctions, something they can be imposed on them to make them, you know, stop dragging this out?
Well, I think that the mayors of now surrounding towns are putting some pressure, and also legislative pressure from our senators and representatives who have been very adamant. They know that, you know, some of their funding's going to come through the legislature, so they want to make it, they want to make people happy, so... Again, I just think, you know, once we get that unbiased third party, be it the DEM or someone else, to say that they're doing what they're doing, we should be okay. Anybody else on this?
Council President, we moved so quickly from executive communications to landfill odors, I didn't have an opportunity to communicate some information that I think you'll be interested in. So, if you could bear with me, I would like to regress back. I'm pleased to inform you that on the 22nd of this month, the City of Cranston and Rhode Island DOT consummated and negotiated an agreement on the Safe Roots to School Program. And it's an extremely beneficial contract that we've reached. From the terms of the initial proposal that they had given us some three or more years ago, amounted to about $230,000. And we've settled on $466,000, which means this is enough money for the design, implementation, and construction of the Phase 1, which is the 12 schools that you folks are familiar with, and those Safe Roots to School programs that are on it. It's unfortunate, Mr. Ferguson is not here tonight, he's on medical leave, he should be taking a lot of credit for this, and it's just a disappointment that he couldn't be here to announce this himself.
Okay, I had one last thing under Communications for the next Finance Committee meeting. I'd like a report from the Finance Director concerning the awarding of Fidelity as a municipal investment-sharing company. We had talked about this, it was recently agreed upon, I think it just came out today, as a matter of fact, that Fidelity was awarded for the municipal sharing. So, if there are any advantages to Cranston to partake in that, because we are now allowed to do that. And again, at the Finance Committee meeting would be fine.
When that legislation was put forward, City of Cranston was very supportive of it, so we are part of that. I did do some investigating at the time, because I was concerned about cash flow and how I can recoup my money, you know, because I'm going through another process now, and all my concerns were met, so we are supportive of this, especially if we can get a better rate of return.
Yeah, maybe you can just give us an overview or an outline of how that would affect what we currently have as opposed to what this potentially could do. Thank you. Okay, Council Vice President Pelletier, Metropolitan Avenue.
Thank you, Council President. Been in discussion with Carlos Lopez regarding this property that belongs to the school, so I'm going to, at this point, I'm going to take this off the docket. I believe the school department is aware of the situation, and it becomes a problem, I'll have them put it back on the docket. But I have two other issues I need to discuss, Council President. First being the Arkright Bridge on Main Street. It's been recently closed, as everybody's mostly aware of, but I'm getting calls from people that aren't familiar with that area, and the weather, Jersey barriers-
What road is it on?
Main Street, western Cranston. Leads into Coventry, West Warwick.
Arkright.
Arkright.
Before Arkright?
Yeah.
Right at Arkright, okay.
Yep, yep. Well, it was before, on the Cranston side. The Hill Street actually is the name of it. Okay, all right, so there's a bridge there. Residents used to cross over to get into Coventry. It's been blocked off. So, what they want to do is have detour signs set up, so to divert the traffic into Coventry and around, so they can, they don't have to cause traffic jams trying to go over that bridge. So, that was one thing. So, I need detour signs put up. If I could have Dave Ferguson or somebody take care of that, and-
But the bridge is on the Batuxit, and it's not in Cranston, it's in Coventry?
No, the Cranston, the Cranston Bridge. There's another bridge right before you get to Arkright. Hill Street. That's the name of the bridge, Hill Street. It goes, there's a detour, the detour isn't set up-
What's the root number it's on?
I'm not sure, it's Main Street, that's all I know, it's off of Main Street. It's the one that goes over the river and through the woods.
Where their grandma's at.
I had to throw that, I had to throw that out there. Yeah, the waterfall, exactly, thank you, Richard. Also with that?
Yeah.
The second thing is, I got a couple of calls from people on Amanda Court, and they just want to know the status of their bio money. If Jerry could respond to that real quickly. Just, either it hasn't come in yet, they haven't heard anything yet, or whatever.
Nothing's changed from what I shared with you at the Flood Commission meeting, I think it was, what, two weeks ago?
Two weeks ago, okay. That's all I had, Council President. Councilman Arquette?
Thank you, Council President. Yes, I had a question for the administration concerning Cranston Historical Society pertaining to economic development. Came to my attention that the Sons of the Union Veterans of the Civil War that annually put on a reenactment, Civil War reenactment. There was a disagreement between the Cranston Historical Society and the reenactors, so they are not going to put on that event next year, and it's my concern, the City of Cranston will lose some revenue, because each year it has grown, and this past year, there were over 400 or 500 people who frequented the Sprague Mansion, the reenactors, and Ward 3. And I would hate to lose that revenue stream for those two days in my area crossing the Cranston Print Works. So, I would like to request from the administration if they could play arbitrarred between the Cranston Historical Society and the Sons of the Union Veterans Civil War, and see if we can come to a mutual agreement and bring the reenactors back to the Sprague Mansion next year on Labor Day. Or if they don't want to reenact at the Sprague Mansion, they could go to Ward 5 of the gazebo, they could go to Ward 4, Councilman Pelletier. I don't want them to leave Cranston, so if we could bring them back for a two-day reenactment, I'd appreciate it. That's the situation, Council President.
Councilman Arquette, would you say that was Sprague Mansion Civil War skirmish?
Could be, could be, Council.
Any other council members?
I would like the administration to comment on that, please, Council President.
Thank you, Council President. Councilman Arquette, I will work on that issue on behalf of the city. I already have been in contact with the Cranston Historical Society and with the Sons of the Civil War Veterans, and I've heard both sides of the story, and it's just a matter of kind of sitting down with them and seeing what the real issues are, but I will work on that.
Thank you. I'd like to know what the problem was, first of all, and second, you don't have to say it publicly, we even privately feel like to tell me. Second, I would like the administration to try to bring it back to the Sprague Mansion, that would be my goal. If not, hopefully it wouldn't leave Cranston, as I said, it could go to another ward, but we'd hate to lose that revenue.
No, absolutely, I hear what you're saying.
Councilman Sanrio?
Not the Civil War. Just another one. I guess this is for Jerry. The hurricane cleanup, I want to go back to Hurricane Irene. Have we been reimbursed yet? Number one, the question is twofold.
I want to ask one at a time. No, we haven't. The PWs, that's the Project Work orders, I'm sorry, were only submitted within the last couple of weeks before Thanksgiving, so I wouldn't anticipate approvals much before the first of the year-
Okay.
-at the earliest. And all the PWs are not in yet, so it's going to be a process.
The other question, which is more troubling, I got a call from a couple of landscaping businesses in my ward, and I've noticed this myself, during the cleanup, there were a lot of out-of-state license plates. My question is, why wasn't Rhode Islanders, Cranstonians given the opportunity to fix the cleanup? Who decided that out-of-state vendors were going to get the cleanup rights for our state, our city?
FEMA did.
FEMA did?
Yes.
That's a state? Can we find out, can we get some information on why, when we have like 75,000 people out of work-
It was the winning bid that the state put out prior to the storm.
The state put out a bid?
For debris management and cleanup.
A nationwide bid? If you had people from other states coming in to clean? So, it wasn't a statewide bid, it was nationwide?
Well, I can't really say, other than it did go out for bid, and the type of work that it is, and the way it was tailored, was designed specifically for people who deal with large amounts of debris in a short period of time. So, naturally, that's going to attract potential debris contractors from across the country. It's a complicated issue, and I'll try to leave it at this for you, at least for this evening, and I'll be happy to share as much time with you if you like. But the way the contract is written, which is according to FEMA guidelines, it isn't the normal sort of contract you would have with, say, for example, the contractor we have here in the city that does a lot of similar work for us, Northeast Tree. They work on an hourly basis, based on the men, the type of equipment, how long it's out there, those sorts of things. When it comes to a large cleanup from a disaster, FEMA dictates a whole different scenario as to how this must be paid for, or they won't reimburse. And that is, for example, in our particular situation, in the storm we suffered in the northeast from Irene, there's a lot of tree debris, okay? Well, that tree debris is paid for when the cleanup, on a cubic yard basis, okay? And that's pretty unfamiliar with a lot of smaller-type organizations that have never done business with a FEMA contract before.
But there wasn't, I mean, some of the houses had minimal tree limbs, I mean, mine was one of them, but a lot of them had bigger ones. I mean, I just can't see in our state why there wasn't more. I didn't see any Rhode Island license plates.
Okay, well, the only thing I can respond to, John, is the, we picked up 30,000 cubic yards of material just here in Cranston, so as you can probably guess from that magnitude, it's going to take some sizable contractors to deal with that. Particularly from an economy of scale, if they're only getting paid on a cubic yard basis, they better be able to handling a large amount of material in short periods of time. Larger trucks, larger pieces of equipment.
Are you privy, can you get that information, where the bidding process, how it went?
It's all online, and I'll be happy to provide that to you.
Can you do that? I'd like that for Public Works, so the next city council meeting is flying.
I can do that, yes, sir.
Thank you.
You were first.
I would just like to make everyone aware, my last name is Luciano, not Luciano, Luciano. Thank you.
Hard C.
Councilman Levaro?
Mr. Cordy, on the same topic, as far as the debris removal and the work that was done from the outside company that removed that debris, are they, have they finalized everything? I know that the Cullion, the old Cullion property was utilized in order to, I guess, shred it and put it, you know, and accumulate it and do what they needed to do. Are we locked up with that property, and is all the contractors out that were there shredding the debris?
I was out there just before Thanksgiving, I think Monday of Thanksgiving week, and they were hauling out the final load at that point in time. Now, there was still a little cleanup that needed to be done, but I would have to guess that they're completely finished and gone from there, yes.
Okay, and just one other thing, if, and I had made a note, I know I had mentioned it to the administration, maybe to Mr. Lopez, before the contracts were allowed in there, I know that that's, based on the DEM and the way that property works, there's open space, there's, it was fenced off, and it's locked, there's a gate, and I guess there was damage done to that gate prior to anybody being allowed in there. And I just want to just follow up, that that gate is going to be repaired, or that there's going to be a lock once this company's out of there, so that we don't have people just going in there and dumping, using it as a dumping ground, because I guess that's what might have happened before, and I don't know if we're really being, doing any type of, doing routine checks back there with the police department and things of allowing people that like to just dump, because it is kind of offset in the back, and there was damage to that fence. I just want to make you aware, I don't know if the city's going to address that.
Yes, it's been damaged several times, it's been repaired several times, and as of last week, the assumption with the contractor being gone, was that was re-secured again. I have no reason to think otherwise, because Public Works is very concerned about that themselves.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the council? Is there any, we'll move on, is there any old business?
There is none.
Introduction to new business, will it look, please read into, new business into the record, please.
We have a resolution authorizing the appointment of a committee to develop a redistricting plan for the six wards of the city. This is to be referred to the Ordinance Committee for a hearing on December 8th. We have a request from National Grid for joint poll location on Ridge Street, to be referred to Public Works for a hearing on December 8th. We have the following new claims to be referred to the Claims Committee for a hearing on December 5th. Property damage claim from Colleen Masterson for an alleged incident on October 27th, 2001, involving a pothole. A property damage claim of Vanessa Maples for an alleged incident on October 16th resulting in motor vehicle damage. A property damage claim of Scott Hipzman for an alleged incident on August 28th due to tree damage. A property damage claim of Lisa Bradley for an alleged incident on October 24th allegedly due to a pothole. A property damage claim of Todd Cambio Jr. for an incident, alleged incident on October 19th allegedly due to a pothole. A property damage claim of Michael Ribizo for an alleged incident on October 14th from an alleged pothole. A property damage claim from Annette Martinelli for an alleged incident on September 19th causing motor vehicle damage due to, motor vehicle damage to a parked vehicle, and that's all I have.
Is there a motion to refer the new business to the committee stated?
Second.
Motion, second, please take the roll.
Yes.
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 Councilor?
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes. Before we go on to the miscellaneous business, just one more correction on the Tax Policy Review Commission. Mr. Stikos is going to be in appointment, and Mr. Arquette from the majority, I need a minority appointment, and there are two, I'm looking for two members from the public. a minority appointment, and there are two, I'm looking for two members from the public. And we also need to communicate to the mayor's office, the mayor has a couple of appointments to that also, so we can get that communication out, get that going.
If need be, if need be.
Conservation easement. On miscellaneous business. Are we still waiting?
To my knowledge, it's still pending out there somewhere, I don't know, I haven't gotten anything from the administration on that.
Need a kev? I'm sorry, I was taking notes for your request. The latest information we got prior to Thanksgiving is they've assured us that there will be a consummated agreement before the end of the year. That's the best information I could give.
Okay, we're meeting early next month. The next meeting will be on Monday, December 19th, at 7:00. Is there a motion to adjourn? Motion adjourned?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, good night.